Order the meeting to the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, November the 15th. This evening, we have Cub Scout PAC 264, and they will lead us in the pledge tonight. So if you all stand with me, and please remain standing after the pledge. We'll be led in prayer by Pastor Sean Holloway from the First Baptist Church of Greenwood.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow with me. Lord, we come to you with one voice. First, we pray for the people of our city. May all who reside here live in peace and with gratitude for being a part of this wonderful community. Next, we lift up our leaders, all those who are in difficult positions to govern. We pray an extra measure of your spirit to guide them, to protect them, and to lead them in the steps that you wish them to go, to make decisions for the benefit of all. Thank you for these willing servants. And Lord, for these younger citizens here, help us to train them and raise them up, ready to accept mantle of leadership, for they are our future. We pray this in the name of the risen Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. May be seated. It's the first time in a while where we've had some scouts with us. And as we usually do, I'm going to ask the scouts to come to the podium and give us your name and PAC number and why you're here, if you can, and then I have a pen for you.
Hi, I'm Edith Smith. I'm from PAC 264, and I am working on my arrow of light break.
Let me just step around over here. Next.
My name is Katia. I'm in Arrow of Light in PAC 264.
My name is Liam, and I am scout for PAC 264.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, roll call.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Dine.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Popper.
Here.
Lexi.
Present.
Hilton.
Here.
Williams.
Here. We do have a court, and just for the record, Mr. Lexi is attending virtually this evening. All of you should receive copies of the minutes from our last regular meeting of November the 1st. Have a motion. So move. Motion Mr. Dine, second. And Mr. Bates. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, then roll call in the minutes.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Stone.
Popper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Minutes are approved with a vote of eight to zero with one extension. Reports, Corporation Council.
We should have received on the share point the items somewhat, but there was no litigation report this time. So if you have questions, please let me know. I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Right. Anything from the controller at this time?
Nothing at this time.
Committee and board reports, all of you should receive copies of the, uh, my report from the last RDC meeting. If you have any questions, let me know. Any other committee or board reports? Hearing none, then this is the time for public comments. Uh, right now, though, we're going to turn it over to the mayor. And Chief Isner.
Counsel, Mr. President, thank you for the time. Tonight, we have the opportunity to swear in four new police officers to the Police Department. And thank you for that opportunity. We're going to swear in them individually tonight since it's 64. And ladies and gentlemen, families that are with these officers that are here today. My name is Mark Myers. I'm the mayor of Greenwood. And I just want to give this, take this opportunity to thank you for being here tonight to support your family members. Uh, I myself was a member of the Police Department for 14 years, and I can tell you that it is a brotherhood. We live together, eat together, spend a lot of time together, uh, and these people depend upon each other. And I want to tell you tonight that tonight, these people will be joining one of the best departments in the state of Indiana to provide some of the best schooling that we have for each officer, in-service training. And we want to tell you that every day, we want to send them home in as good as or better shape than they were when they left that morning. We want to take care of our officers. We want to bring them into not just the city, but into the family. Because this is all, we all work together as a family, the entire city. Which means that as your officers are brought into our family, you also are a part of our family. And if you see a problem, if you see an issue, if you see a concern, we want you to make that call. Let us know that you see something that's going on so we can address it. Because there is so much stress today in the life of a police officer. And so much public consternation. We want to be there for them. We want to make their lives the best they can be. We want to do everything that we can for them to bring them in to be the best person they can be throughout the next 30 or 40 years. It's nobody's going to retire in 20. I don't want to keep them all here. So thank you for being here. Thank you for supporting them, and thank you for all being a part of our family. I'd like to introduce Mr. Rep. Paul. Raise your right hand, or if you have to. I state your name.
I, Nicole.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Indiana.
Of the state of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As an officer of the Greenwood Police Department.
As an officer of the Greenwood Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And according to law.
And according to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome. Roger Lind. Raise your right hand, repeat it. I state your name.
I, Roger Lind.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Indiana.
Of the state of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a Greenwood police officer.
As a Greenwood police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And according to law.
And according to the law.
So help me.
So help me God.
Welcome. Ryan Run. Ryan, you raise your right hand, repeat it. I state your name.
I, Ryan Run.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the state of Indiana.
And the state of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As an officer of the Greenwood Police Department.
As an officer of the Greenwood Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And according to the law.
And according to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Jordan Harris.
Raise your right hand, repeat it. I state your name.
I, Jordan Harris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Indiana.
Of the state of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As an officer of the Greenwood Police Department.
As an officer of the Greenwood Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And according to law.
And according to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome.
It is always a joy to be a part of swearing in of our police officers as well as firefighters. And so congratulations to you all. You're welcome to stay, but I know you're not. So we will not be offended when you get up and walk out. So thank you very much. Safe out there.
Safe.
All right. As we said earlier, this is an opportunity for members of the audience to address the council concerning matters that are on the agenda. So if you're here tonight, wish to address the council, please step forward to the podium. State your name and address for the record, and there is a five-minute time limit. All right. Hearing none, then moving on. Ordinances and resolutions. First reading, ordinance number 2149.
In ordinance amending the 2022 salary ordinance, common council ordinance number 2137, to increase the maximum annual rate for part-time substitute systems, part-time building and security officer, and part-time records clerk within the Police Department, sponsored by Dine.
Have a motion. So move. Motion Mr. Dine, second, by Mr. Bates. Any discussion? Ordinance 2149. This was just an omission from the original budget for the part-time employees. It was just an oversight. All right. Anything else? Hearing none, then roll call. Ordinance 2149, first reading.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Popper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Ordinance 2149 passes first reading nine to zero. Ordinance 2150.
In ordinance fixing the salary of the common council of the city of Greenwood, Indiana for the year 2022, sponsored by Campbell.
Do I have a motion? So move. Motion Mr. Dine, second. Second. Second by Mr. Pendleton. Any discussion on ordinance 2150? Hearing none, then roll call. Ordinance 2150, first reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Popper.
Aye.
Lexi. Lexi.
Mr. Bates.
Aye.
All right.
Hilton.
Nay.
Williams.
Nay.
Bates.
Nay.
Ordinance 2150 passes first reading five to four. Second reading, ordinance 2146.
In ordinance providing for an additional appropriation from the aviation fund to budget qualification to $225,000, sponsored by Gibson.
Do I have a motion? So move. Motion Mr. Dine, second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call. Ordinance 2146, second reading.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Popper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye. Ordinance 2146 passes second reading nine to zero. Ordinance 2147.
In ordinance vacating flat drainage easement located within Horstville Commerce Center Phase Two, Lot Two, sponsored by Campbell.
Do I have a motion? So move. Motion Mr. Dine, second. Second. Second by Mr. Pendleton. Any discussion? Seeing none, then roll call. Ordinance 2147, second reading.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Popper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye. Ordinance 2147 passes second reading nine to zero. Resolution number 2123.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council approving an annual cooperation agreement between the city of Greenwood and the town of White, regarding certain real property improvements for taxes, air, and heating, swimming, and farming, and sponsored by Campbell.
Do I have a motion? So move. Motion Mr. Dine, second. Second. By Mr. Bates. Any discussion? Resolution 2123. Seeing none, then roll call. Resolution 2123, second reading.
Hill.
Aye.
Popper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Resolution 2123 passes second reading nine to zero. Resolution 2124.
A resolution declaring certain real property improvements for taxes, air, and heating, swimming, and farming, and sponsored by Campbell and Popper.
Do I have a motion? So move. Motion by Mr. Williams, second. Second. Second by Mr. Pendleton. Any discussion? Resolution 2124. Hearing none, then roll call. Resolution 2124.
Popper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Nay.
Gibson. Aye. Hill.
Resolution 2124 passes second reading eight to one. A new business, introduction of new ordinances or resolutions, and I want to take a moment to speak to our scouts here just for a second. If you have an agenda, you see there are some items that are first reading, some items that are second reading. Now we add an area called introduction. The ordinances and resolutions under introduction are new. This is the first night that they have been presented. Our typical process is that ordinances are introduced on one night. Then two weeks later, the next council meeting, there's first reading, and that's code for first vote. That's the first time we vote on it. And then two weeks after that, there's a second vote that takes place. So the two of the ordinances tonight was the first reading, and we voted on those. The next four items were things we voted on last time, and then we approved them tonight. After they're approved under second reading, then they become ordinance if the mayor signs it. So, but that's the process. So the next couple items, next three items on the agenda are things that are being introduced tonight, and it won't be a vote unless we decide to suspend the rules, but I don't know if that will happen or not. But, and then two weeks from now, there'll be a first reading, and then two weeks after that, a second reading. So while it seems like we've gone through these pretty quick, the, at least on the first several items, we have seen those at previous meetings and are aware of it. So just want to let you know. All right, ordinance 2151.
In ordinance vacating flat drainage and utility easements located within Lot One of the Campbell Minor subdivision, sponsored by Campbell.
Just case anybody has any question, the Rick Campbell that this is involving is no relation to me. So the fact that my name, my last name appears in the ordinance and I sponsored it, it's nothing to do with me. So anyway. Anybody want to speak to this?
I will. My name's Andrew Barkosi with Mower Surveying on Zoom. How you guys doing this evening?
All right.
I'm here representing Rick Campbell. He's the builder of Campbell Builder Homes. Property is located at 1122 West Stones Crossing Road, just east of Honey Creek Road. And he is purchasing about 1.63 acres on the rear part of his property to add to his property, just to have some extra land and a little bit more buffer. And doing the process, his lot, it was platted under Johnson County rules, has now been obviously annexed into Greenwood. So to add this land, we need to replat his lot. And so we need to get rid of some of the easements to add new easements. And also, I'll get into a little bit, there's a building actually in an easement as well. So the first easement that we're asking to be vacated is a 20-foot D Newe along the north property line. That line is just moving further north, so it's just kind of replacing it to go north. As for the portion of the east easement that we're asking to be vacated, at some point, when he, when Mr. Campbell was building the detached garage, he somehow got it in 20-foot easement. We weren't part of that. I don't know the backstory of it. But there's no utilities at all in that easement, not even sure why the easement exists. It is an odd-shaped easement. That's due to when this was originally platted, the house to the east, which is Lot Two, had a existing septic, and for some reason, they put the property line through the septic, and so there's an easement for the septic. And so when Johnson County required a drainage easement around it, it jogged it into the lot. And that's why you see kind of that odd-shaped easement there. We're not vacating the entire easement along the east line, just the part that starts at the septic field, goes around it, and up to the top. And then the more southern part, southern part that's going to exist is, there's an electric transformer already in that easement. So obviously, we still need to keep that one there. And that's about it. So I think the, we've discussed it with staff and tech review and in other meetings that we could have come in front of the BT, BPW to have an encroachment agreement, but we thought this was just a cleaner way just to vacate that easement. It's an interior lot easement, not really necessary or needed. The easements will still be able to continue all the way through with the new easements that we extend along the west and along the north. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
All right, any questions at this time? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Resolution 2125.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council to adopt a written fiscal plan for the annexation of approximately 78 acres located north of Main Street along Holmes and Five Fourth Roads, referencing annexation ordinance number 2152, sponsored by Gibson.
Mr. Davis. Welcome.
The next item on your agenda is a fiscal plan for the annexation of the area. So this petition is to bring in the land as agricultural. So in doing so, well, there's a lot of zeros in your fiscal plan. We're not bringing in any additional population as this is proposed. So really, what this financial plan is showing us is, as presented, our expenses are on fleet streets because we're not taking in population to serve. We're taking in roads that we need to take. Now, I know the petitioner has additional plans for the property in terms of development. I'll let our petitioner talk about that a little bit more during their time. Just as the nuts and bolts of it, this was presented as ag. We have to analyze it as ag. So those are the numbers that you have before you. Now, we'll also bring up, late Friday, we got a letter for withdrawal of one of the properties. That is the Miller property. It's a part of the South property. Yeah, I'll let our petitioner address how they wish to move forward. This may affect their continuity. I'll let our petitioner discuss how that affects us. In terms of fiscal report, if that property is removed, it essentially just brings down the number that's saved here because we'll lose however many feet of roadway that was adjacent to that property. So if that property is pulled out of this annexation, it only reduces that total number. If further updates needed, I'll certainly provide them to you the first week. Otherwise, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But Tim Oaks, who's here to represent the annexation itself, will probably be on the end here most of the time.
Do I have any questions for Mr. Davis?
Then I understand you're right to say the main purpose of this annexation is just so we are able to improve the roads and that area.
So our petitioner has plans for how to develop the land, but there, I mean, it's 370 acres. It's going to take a lot to, they want to do a planning and development, so it's going to take a lot to kind of figure out the language, the semantics. So they wanted to go ahead and get the annexation started, and we had to pick a zone for it. So it was hard to say, oh, we'll make this residential median. Well, that doesn't really fit what we're talking about. Or, you know, just picking a zone, it wouldn't have worked for us. So in bringing it in as ag, it's kind of just a baseline zone. We still have all the procedural steps we would if this came in as another zone. It's still going to have to seek a rezone in the future and become something else. So at that time, we would be back here with the reason petition to talk about whatever the specific project is. Right now, we're just talking about lands and roads as far as the, as this fiscal plan is presented.
So what we'll do, though, if we take, if we annex this, which takes over what roads exist there, then we're responsible for maintaining and for our people.
I assume that this is a voluntary annexation?
100% yes.
You have any questions for the council? All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Like to speak.
Members of the council, my name is Tim Oaks. I'm an attorney at Ice Miller, representing the petitioner of Potomac, Indiana. First, I'd like to thank Dale and the staff that the city has been great to work with. As he indicated, this is first step into something that's a little bit bigger. And the reason it's being done in this fashion is because of the way that the Indiana State statute dealing with annexations is written. In particular, their, the property being annexed is, is in a fire protection district. When you have property that's in a fire protection district, despite when the annexation ordinance is adopted, current state law prohibits the annexation from becoming effective until the 2nd January 1st, after the adoption of the annexation ordinance by municipal council, in this case, Greenwood City Council. Which means if, for example, we adopted, if you adopted the annexation ordinance in the calendar year 2021, the earliest it could become effective under the current state statute is January 1st of 2023. And so we need to bring some, we need to bring it in and have it brought in as a holding pattern, as a low-density district. Anything else that needs to occur in the district would have to require a rezoning where we'd have to come back in to the planning commission, then ultimately to the council to get that approval. So that is, that is why it's being done in this manner. We are hoping that we might be able to get a change to the, to the legislation. We're attempting to do that in the state legislature right now. But as which, as with such things, you never know if you're going to be successful in that endeavor. So this is that first step. So with that, if you have any answered questions that the council might have.
Any questions at this time?
I do have a quick question. I know we're obviously very early in the process, but what intended development are we looking at? I feel like the agricultural annex feels like a blank check. I'm not very helpful with that.
Yeah. From our perspective, it was, it was, the agricultural zoning is the opposite of a blank check because it's so limiting in terms of what you can do there. So if you want to do something other than what's permitted in the ag district, you got to go back and get more approvals. So we kind of view it as the opposite of a blank check. Ultimately, what is being pursued here by Oldy is a, is a Delaware community. It's somewhat well-known. It is an age-restricted community under Housing Code Aberration Act. It's a federal act where at least one resident in a home is required to be 65 years of age. The fact that communities in Delaware builds a fair number of lots because the amenities that they afford their residents are truly significant. They've got a, so they have a Delaware community, for example, over Plainfield. for example, over Plainfield, they, it's under construction. They have one up at Fishers that's almost done. And, for example, one at Fishers, they have two separate clotheshouses for the residents that live there. So it's a, it's a lifestyle. You know, we think it's an exciting project. But it takes a little bit of planning to get there, especially when you're bringing it into a city by annexation.
Would those be single-family attached?
Uh, single-family detached.
Would it be a gated community?
Uh, that has not been decided, but that's a possibility. One of the folks we have to have a conversation with about that here, police and fire folks. And if they don't want it, they probably won't do it. But that is a possibility. We're not that far along yet.
All right, any other questions?
So you're trying to change state law regarding the annexation and fire protection districts? All right, let us know how we can help. There's an entire, you know, one-point-four billion dollars of assessed value I want in the city of Greenwood to go to Greenwood Fire Protection. So you let us know.
We've come up with an approach that we think works. We think the reason for the delay are situations where there's a significant portion of the assessed value that's taken from the fire protection district. So the second January first is intended to give adequate time to the remaining portion of the fire protection district to come up with, okay, what are we going to do for fire protection and emergency services? In this particular case, we're taking such a large, I said, a small percentage of the assessed value, frankly, less than one percent. So we're putting a threshold in. Where if you take a small enough value, you don't have to have to wait here to. And we think that allows for annexation, especially when there's a project to be done where there's, you know, economic development can't occur. So that's the approach we're taking.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ordinance number twenty-one fifty-two.
An ordinance amending certain territory continues to the city of Greenwood, Indiana, placing it within the corporate boundaries and making it a part of the city of Greenwood and to redefine the corporate boundaries of the city of Greenwood, Indiana to include approximately three-hundred-and-seventy-five acres located north of Main Street along Holmes Road and Five Fourth Road. Series of Old D Homes of Indiana F L C, sponsored by Gibson.
I assume that all the comments previous to the last resolution are pertinent to this ordinance? All right, thank you. Mislaidious business, public comments. If you're here tonight, wish to address the council concerning items that are not on the agenda. Now's your opportunity. You may step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. All right. Seeing, moving on, council, miscellaneous business. I have two items. One, we have an appointment, we have an appointment to the Greenwood Community Development Corporation. That appointment is a one-year appointment. Paul St. Pierre is our current appointee. And he has expressed an interest in continuing in that. So I would entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Paul St. Pierre to the Greenwood Community Development Corporation for another year. So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bates, second by Ms. Gibson. We'll do it that way. Any questions, discussion? Since we have one member who has attended virtually, we will do a roll call vote on this motion.
Lexi.
I.
Middleton.
I.